Okay, Mr. McNeely.
Yes, Chair Andveris.
Okay, it is four thirty, so if you would like to begin our study session, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Andveris, and welcome. Planning and zoning commissioners, looks like we have five of you right now. So we do not have a quorum. We're hoping that either Commissioner Williams and/or Commissioner Clifford join us prior to your public hearing at five thirty. We have some staff on the meeting, and it looks like we have one possibly member of the public with us this evening. So for everyone on the meeting, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission Study Session for April twenty eighth. And on study session, the Planning and Zoning Commissioners will get a briefing on their public hearing items for next month's public hearing. The public hearing of May twenty six, twenty twenty one, staff will give them a brief orientation to public hearing items for next month's public hearing. And with that, Bob Short is managing our one public hearing item next week. It is CUP twenty one twenty, a campground conditional use permit in the G-zone, generally in the Red Lake area. And thanks for sharing your screen, Bob. Go ahead and give the, give the Planning and Zoning Commission orientation to the case.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This, this case is a campground, as Jess said, it's located about five miles north of the commercial center in Red Lake. This is the property right here. It actually goes across, it's right on Highway sixty four, but it also goes across the Grand Canyon Railroad. So it's on the, on both sides of the Grand Canyon Railroad. Only one side is proposed for the campground. And because obviously it's difficult to get across to the other side, so this is the only portion right here that is proposed for the campground. As you can tell, it's heavily treated property. It's also right on sixty four, so that they don't have the issues that a lot of campgrounds have with having to be, having to improve roadways to get to the site. Of course, it's also kind of noisy, but that's not anything that we consider in this case. Let me go ahead and see if I can share the site plan. I had difficulty doing that earlier, but I'll see if I can do that. Can everyone see that?
Not seeing your site plan yet, Bob.
I think there's an issue with, I'm not sure what's going on. I want to try to reshare and go back to the site plan.
All right, have on now.
Yep, seeing it.
All right, good. So as you can see, there's this access off of State Route sixty four. This is kind of a pullout right there on State Route sixty four. It's existing as is, so this would be their access. They have provided us some evidence of legal access. I haven't had a chance to review that yet, but I'm guessing that they probably do have legal access being so close to the highway like this. So as you can see, they have, they have a driveway and they have parking all in the same area. And then they have trails off of the parking to various campsites. They have, they're proposing twelve campsites. And I'm also noting they have this yurt over here that's a one-bedroom yurt. I'm not sure exactly. I would have to look at exactly what the plan is this, but I imagine it's for caretakers of the campground. It depends on, you know, the permitting they, as you know, in a general zone, they can develop a dwelling on that. So I don't know if they intend this to be a dwelling or just a yurt for six months out of the year like everything else. This is the red, the proposed restroom that would have showers and also storage area inside here. You can see they have, they have septic, so it is kind of a permanent, permanent constructed campground. And you know, the good thing about the septic is later on, if the campground closes down, they could develop a house here and have a septic for it. And then, of course, you can see the water cistern here as well. This is a rendition of the types of tents that they're looking at. They're kind of, they kind of look like a yurt, but they're actually tents. This is what we like to see at the county. It looks like there's a platform down here. But the way we're looking at these at this point is that everything has to be moved during the time of year when it's not being used. So first, for a hundred and eighty days a year, they can use it. It's seasonal. It's not a permanent dwelling or a permanent type, you know, hotel motel room. It is, it is seasonal, and that's, that's coming a lot from building division. So everything has to go, has to be moved during the off-season except for that platform on the bottom. And I'll show you another picture of that. This is one that's not, not so closed up. Now, if you look at this site, one of the good things about it is that, and I won't try to bring up the aerial again since I'll have to stop sharing and start over again. There aren't any, any dwellings, any, any other developed residential around here except for quite a ways to the north. So I don't see it being an impact to any of the neighbors. They have provided a neighborhood compatibility study. We required them to notice out a thousand feet since there just wasn't anyone around here. And they had a neighborhood plan. I don't believe they got any super significant negative comments on it. And they are close to high-country fires, so they would have fire service from high-country fire and rescue. That, that's a good thing because lately, high-country fire and rescue has indicated they may not be able to serve a lot of the campgrounds in the valley area just because they're so far away. Anyway, with that, does the commission have any questions?
Yeah, Bob, this is a couple of things. Are we requiring on all these campgrounds, we're just leaving water for firefighting up to the fire chief? We're assuming that he's going to require what they need, and we don't need to worry about it.
Commissioner Best, yes, that's, that's basically correct because, you know, as you know, the fire chief, they are the experts on, on fire. So if they have a certain amount of fire, you know, like water, for example, in a cistern, like you can see here, that they require for firefighting, then they can require that. They look at everything, they look at firings, they look at all kinds of different aspects of the development to make sure that they're being fire safe. Of course, out here in, in valley as well, with, you know, we've noticed lately, there's lots of wind blowing, so probably not a good time for firing. So I imagine it also have some kind of control over that where no open fires would be allowed during those times.
Yeah, that makes sense. Also, you said everything has got to go in the, in the off-season. Have we imposed that on other campgrounds? I just don't remember that.
It's been kind of, it's been a learning process for us, and I'm honestly not positive about some of the earliest ones. But that's, that's definitely what we've come to at this point is that it's not, you know, there has to be a definite separation between what's a hotel room, you know, a permanent type hotel motel cabin lodging setup and this type of temporary campground that's on a general zone property. If you want to do a lodging type setup, you know, like, for example, right down the road here, about five miles down the road at the, I guess it's called, at the KOA. Can't remember what the KOA is called now, Grand Canyon KOA, maybe. I'm not sure. Commissioner or Chair Andveris would know.
Yeah, you're correct, Mr. Short. It is Grand Canyon KOA.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In that case, that's a commercial zone, and you know, they have cabins without restrooms. They also have several other different kinds of lodging. But for these campgrounds, what we've said is they can have tent sites, and they can, and the ordinance says specifically tents or yurts. So what we're looking at is that, that they, it has to be some kind of canvas color or some kind of tent material, and that has to be removed. And that, like I said, that's coming from the building division to a great extent because they're, they're saying, we're not going to approve anything. I mean, these have to be temporary. These cannot be there all year. So what we're saying is that everything has to be, be removed and, and taken away during the off-season. Another thing you probably noticed is that, at least, you know, in some recent cases, this, I've started seeing wagons. So it's kind of a covered wagon type lodging. And of course, that would have to be a canvas cover as well, which is, you know, what the old wagons were, so that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess that's something we pick up when we do, you know, after five years, when we do a renewal. Another thing that occurred to me was that some years ago, we had quite an issue with having something, gosh, what was it? I think it was a Raptor center north of valley. And we had an issue where it wasn't consistent with the area plan because it was too far out of valley or Grand Canyon Junction. Are we supposed to say that now? And I know that these are now, we've changed the code, so these are good on, in the G-zone. But I just wonder if anybody's given that any thought because we're starting to populate well outside of valley. And it, you know, these things are popping up like mushrooms.
Yes, in terms of the, well, you've probably noticed the Raptor Ranch that's taken over where Bedrock used to be. It hasn't, as far as I know, it hasn't, it hasn't started the, the Raptor shows or anything like that.
I didn't know that. That's, that's interesting.
Yeah, we did require a process, and I don't remember exactly what we said, you know, for, for that. But it's been a while. We had a pre-epithem, you know, quite a while ago. But they're not, they're not approved to do, you know, Raptor shows at this point. Oh, I think we actually looked at it as being a, maybe an existing amusement park. I can't remember. Jess might remember better, but that's probably not important at this point. You know, these were, it was something that we saw a need for, and of course, when you, when you open up, you know, a new type of use on general zone property that isn't very utilized in the county, there are, there's a lot of the, there are a lot of these parcels out there, as you know. Then people have really shown a lot of interest in doing this.
Well, it's just, you know, just a thought that you might look at the area plan. Maybe we need to change the area plan. I don't know.
Right, so in that, well, in this case, this is in, within the Red Lake area plan. I'm pretty sure, I'll have to make absolutely sure, but I think it's within Red Lake area plan. And that's, we'll have to look at the policies to make sure this is consistent with the policies in that area plan. I think it probably, it probably is.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, I've got a question for you.
Yes, Commissioner Ruggles?
Yeah, I noticed there doesn't seem to be any indication of whether or not they've got electrical service. They planning on going solar on this?
You know, I haven't, I did, I did not see that in their narrative yet, or I haven't, haven't read it that carefully yet. But I would, I would, I would think they would go electric because this is along Highway seventy, excuse me, sixty four, where there are existing electric lines. But I don't, I haven't, I don't believe they wanted to go solar. I think they did want to go with electric if they could get it. It's kind of difficult sometimes to, to get, I've heard recently that APS is kind of difficult to get, you know, an answer out of them, what they can do. But that would be my assumption.
That's nothing new, but just, just my opinion there, but thank you very much.
Yep, you bet. Thanks, Mr. Ruggles. Any other questions?
Mr. Short, this is Chair Andveris. When Commissioner Best was asking about the removal of the tents during off-season, is the applicant proposing that this just be a seasonal type of use?
Madam Chair, it really isn't coming so much from the applicant. I guess the, there's a couple of things to look at. Six months is probably about the right amount of time in this area, as you know, to stay in a tent. You probably, I mean, if you go beyond that, it's getting a little cold for tents. But the building division, like I've, like I said, was, they've indicated that these are temporary, this is temporary lodging. And they limit the amount of time that they can be used as lodging to a hundred and eighty days per count for every year. So that's a lot of where this is coming from. And I think a part of it is just, if you, you know, if you left, if you leave a ten or canvas up all year long, then obviously it gets more and more deteriorated. So we're saying, we're making that part of looking at this as being temporary and making sure that it is temporary. If they have a storage facility on the site and they move everything in there, then that's good. But if you take down a tent, you better not have anything inside it, or it's not going to obviously last very long. So that, that's the thought on that. I'm not sure if that answers your question. Does that make sense?
Well, well, it kind of does because if I'm understanding it correctly, the one hundred and eighty days is being driven by the building department. So this fits within the guidelines of being temporary. And I, I, where I was kind of wondering is this, for example, the KOAs are open March, all of March through all of October. That's what March, April, May, June, July, August, September, October. That's eight months. So that would be two months longer. You know, the other campgrounds in the area, speaking of the KOAs, are open about two months longer than this one would be allowed to be. And that was what I was wondering if this was something that was, that the applicant wanted. But it sounds like it's something more that it's, it's being driven by the building department. And I'm wondering if the applicant is aware that they're only going to be able to be open for six months out of the year.
Well, that has been coming out at pre-ep meetings, you know, and like I said, it's a, you know, it's a learning process when you start doing it. You don't really know what to expect when you, when you set up this type of land, a new land use that's allowed by code. So we, so obviously, it's kind of developed, you know, over time. But definitely, that, that is, that is in our, I've actually recently made sure and put in really clear language in our pre-application notes that I expect to get out, you know, for review from some of the other planners soon. And it totally spells that out because, I mean, if you look at the KOA, then they, they have some lodging that would, that is not, I mean, most of the lodging there is not tents. I guess they, you know, if you wanted to stay in a tent, I guess you can longer than, you know, that amount of time. And I guess the other thing to think about is that this is a lodging option provided by the applicant, right? So they set these up, and they're, they're set up for people to come stay in, so it becomes more of a lodging type option. Where at the KOA, I believe people bring their own tents. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, they bring their own tents or RVs or campers, and they've also got the cabins there. And really, if it comes down to it, I'm just thinking business-wise, if the applicant is aware that they're only going to be able to be open for six months, and they have done their projections and their business plan, and that is sufficient. On, you know, that's, that's, that's great because I'm thinking business-wise, on, you know, every month is, is, you know, a revenue stream. And so I, I just didn't want, I just wanted to be sure that the applicant knew well ahead that you get six months and per the, you know, per the ordinance, that's all you get. So I guess I just didn't want there to be any surprises to the applicant because, again, time is revenue. And two months can be a lot in, in that particular time. So I'll just leave it there because we do have to let the ordinance and the building department, we do have to, we have to stick to that, so.
Yeah, Commissioner, I mean.
Yeah, I'll just leave it there.
Okay. And Madam Chair, it's, it's, it's important to think about the difference between these general zone campgrounds and a commercial campground, which is going to have more options and, you know, you know, more things going on. So the investment's not quite as much, and I think that's the reason these are popular because there's so many general zone properties out here.
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree. I like Commissioner Best's analogy that these campgrounds in that area are popping up like mushrooms. And I got to tell you, I, I could not agree more. So we'll, you know what? We'll take each one as it comes. So my question has been answered, Mr. Short. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I've got my hand up now, and now I've learned the difference between clapping hand and raising hand. So I've learned something today.
Mr. Best, go ahead.
Well, I just want to make sure that in your conversation with the applicant, that the storage is part of the application. We would not, I mean, there's a daunting amount of material here to store. There's no obvious place to store it in valley that I'm aware of. And so if there's going to be storage on the property, it needs to be part of the application, needs to be appropriately screened, painted, et cetera, just as we would ask for stores to be handled anywhere. We wouldn't want to be surprised come winter and find, you know, three or four storage units out there that weren't on the plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. That's a, that's a really good point, and that should, I think, because you put that in a place that's not very visible, screen it. And you're right, they, they may want to start bringing in storage units to do that. That's a good point. Any other questions from the commission?
Okay, Bob, this is Jess again. Thanks, thanks for that presentation. Thanks, Commissioners. Thanks for your questions. As, as Bob referred to, you know, we have been on a learning curve. I'm glad we put the time and effort into updating our zoning orders the way we did, in that these campgrounds in the G-zone are, by definition, the campsites are defined as temporary tents and or yurts or similar type things, soft-sided things. We get pushed by some applicants wanting to put shipping containers for the campsites or glass pyramids or other hard-sided things, and we've told them now, this, this, this is, you know, we have a definition of the zoning orders. These are temporary. Our building division looks at it for fire rating of the material on the tent or yurt. And, and other than that, it is a temporary structure, so that's where building code kicks in, that, that Bob alluded to, where it's a six-month thing under building code. So zoning ordinance, by ordinance, these are temporary. We just use the word temporary and without giving a time limit. But then when you get to the nexus, the connection to the building code, building code is what's saying six months. So we're really looking at, at these campgrounds under a CUP in the G-zone as being a low footprint, low-impact development that if and when they go away, they don't leave some permanent facilities on the site that then someone is trying to use as a residence and having more than, more than the number of residences that would be permitted by the underlying G-zoning, which is one primary, one accessory dwelling unit. So there's been some thought, and we're, and we're continuing to learn and really working with people to, to understand our requirements. And that's why we put a lot of time and effort into our pre-application meeting process and the pre-application meeting notes that people get before they even apply. So with that, Chair Andveris, are you ready to move on through the rest of the study session agenda?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any administrative renewal conditional use permits to, to let you know about this month. But I would like to jump right into our department update, the Community Development Department update. Wanted to let you know that we successfully hired a hydrologist. Matthew Storish is going to be joining us, I believe, in June, and that'll be a lot of help to John Carr in the engineering division in getting their work done. So when he comes on board, we'll be sure to bring him to a meeting and have you all meet him. Speaking of staff, we also wanted to let you know on item number two here, that our department is recruiting a compliance management position. We left that open through much of this past year, being concerned with, with resource revenue constraint for the entire county. And the county instituted a vacancy review board for the county to allow departments to hire open positions. We've been getting lots of code enforcement requests and had a hard time managing that with our existing staff without a dedicated compliance management staff member. So the vacancy review board did approve hiring that position, so we have a couple candidates, and we're looking forward to getting that position filled. On item number three on your department update agenda, just letting you know that we are still in phase one. The county is still in phase one operations in response to the COVID nineteen situation. We do anticipate from county management and from the health department, moving to phase two potentially in July, at the beginning of July. So the change there would be that our lobby would be open, and we would need more staff in the building than we currently have, although we do have quite a bit of staff in the building on a daily basis. And we would be accommodating the public coming in our lobby. That's still no word, however, on our public hearing, the public hearings such as, such as you'll have this evening at five thirty on when we would be able to open those to the public. We're really taking guidance from, from the board on that and taking their direction on it. We've become aware that our neighbors down in Yavapai County are holding some Planning and Zoning Commission hearings with, with some, in a hybrid method with some public in attendance. So we're actually have a great working relationship with Yavapai County. So we'll be reaching out to them and figuring out how they're doing, what they're doing, and we'll be using all the resources from our county team, including our county attorney. So with that, Chair Antovere, are you ready to move on through the rest of the uh study session agenda?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, we don't have any administrative renewal conditional use permits to to let you know about this month. Um, but I would like to jump right into our department update, the Community Development Department update. Wanted to let you know that we success successfully hired a hydrologist. Uh, Matthew Storish is going to be joining us, I believe, in June. And that'll be a lot of help to John Carr in the Engineering Division in getting their work done. So um when he comes on board, we'll be sure to bring him to a meeting and have you all meet him. Uh, speaking of staff, we also wanted to let you know on item number two here that our department is recruiting a compliance management position. We left that open um through much of this past year, um being concerned with with uh resource revenue constraint for the entire county. And um the county instituted a vacancy review board um for the county to allow departments to hire open positions. Um, we've been getting lots of code enforcement requests and had a hard time managing that with our existing staff without a dedicated uh compliance management uh staff member. So the vacancy review board did approve uh hiring that position. So um we have a couple candidates and we're looking forward to getting that position filled. On item number three on your department update agenda, uh just letting you know that we are still in phase one. The county is still in phase one operations in response to the COVID-19 situation. We do anticipate um from county management and from the Health Department moving to phase two uh potentially in July, at the beginning of July. Uh, so the change there would be that our lobby would be open and we would need more staff in the building than we currently have. Although we do have quite a bit of staff in the building on a daily basis. And we would be accommodating the public coming in our lobby. Uh, that's still no word, however, on our public hearing. The public hearings such as uh such as you'll have this evening at 5:30 on when we would be able to open those to the public. We're really taking guidance from from the board on that and taking their direction on it. We've become aware that uh our neighbors down in Yavapai County are holding some Planning and Zoning Commission hearings with with some as in a hybrid method with some public uh in attendance. So um we're actually uh have a great working relationship with Yavapai County. So we'll be reaching out to them and figuring out how they're doing, what they're doing. And we'll be using um all the resources from our uh county team, including our county attorney's office and concerns with open meeting law and how we can start looking at moving towards that direction. Any questions from any of the Commissioners on that? Okay, um, wanted to let you know on item four here that um we are still moving on with the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan. We have Melissa with us, so if anyone has any questions, um let us know. Or those of you who are on the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan Committee, if you want to do uh let people know where where the committee is pretty pretty close to being done with goals and policies to the updated area plan. So any comments from either the Commissioners on that committee or from Melissa on that area plan update process? All right, um, hearing none. The next item here is that um the Flagstaff Regional Plan Update is moving forward. And our staff is supporting the and working in in conjunction with the City of Flagstaff staff for update of Flagstaff Regional Plan. As a matter of fact, right now, um as of about an hour ago, the City Council for the City Flagstaff uh and the County Board of Supervisors are holding a joint meeting um over various topics. But on their agenda this evening is also the regional plan. So um Jay's sitting in on that meeting, as is uh county management staff. So we will be giving you updates as to uh as what comes out of discussions between the City Council and the Board of Supervisors regarding the regional plan update. Also, our other long range planning project that Melissa's working on is the Route 66 Brownfield EPA Grant Project. And that is, that is all of our department update. Are there any questions from any of the Commissioners, particularly on some of the on the long range projects that that Melissa manages? All right, well, the next item on your study session agenda is an update of board actions. Wanted to let you know that on April 13th, the board heard the Windmill Ranch Zone Change, the proposed Zone Change Resort Commercial. And on April 14th, the board heard the Kachina Highlands uh PC Plan Community Zone Change. Both of those requests were denied by the board. That board was not able to make the findings on either of those, so they were both denied. On May 11th, the board will be hearing appointment of Robert Baca. Robert goes by Dennis. I understand that I also go by my middle name. So um Dennis Baca hopefully will be joining the Planning and Zoning Commission Hearing appointed from District Two next month. And Dennis informed me that he served on the Planning and Zoning Commission um some years ago. So possibly some of the Commissioners um know Dennis and and are familiar with him. But looking forward to welcoming him to your commission. And the following day on May 12th, the board will hear continuation of the Two Guns Resort Commercial Zone Change. Any questions on Board of Supervisors' actions? All right, on your study session agenda, the next thing on your agenda is roundtable. And wanted to see if there were any Commissioners who had any roundtable comments or questions before we jump into your uh renewable energy ordinance study session. So any roundtable questions or comments from any of the Commissioners?
Uh, yes, uh, I've got one for you. The uh Pittman Valley uh case with the stand pipe. I made sure that I uh watched that via Zoom because I wanted to see how it would come out. And I was kind of curious about one of the questions you were asked. And that was about the Kadampa Retreat Center being able to utilize that stand pipe if the CUP was approved. And the thing that I kind of wondered about is because one of the conditions that we put in place was that it was for residential end users only. And uh give me a little guidance here. How did you uh reach, how did you get the answer to the committee or to the board that you did, which said, yes, I could use it?
Okay, so um, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. And I I remember that question well. I remember looking back at um at the existing conditional use permit conditions for for that particular stand pipe. So the existing conditions included um providing water to the um hotel on that site. So so I believe, and I'm sure there would be ways of of splitting hairs on the question. You know, the um the Kadampa Temple facility, which didn't exist, obviously, when when the older CUP was approved, um and the the hotel that was on the site. So as as you're probably aware, the applicants previously owned that hotel. So the old conditional use permit specified, it didn't specify that they owned the hotel or that they had to stay in ownership of the hotel, but it specified that they could provide water to that hotel. And that's where we saw the the existing CUP. Obviously, the the proposed um conditional use permit that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and then appealed to the Board of Supervisors was denied by the Board of Supervisors. So in answering that question, um what I was trying to get across was that the the applicants had the entitlements to, under the existing conditional use permit, to continue providing that hotel with water from their stand pipe. Does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, it certainly does because I just wanted to be very clear on that so that uh I didn't have a problem with it in the future and perhaps others on the Commission uh didn't have a problem with it and understanding how you reached the conclusion you did when you answered the board's question. So uh that that does it for me. I understand completely uh your response to the question at the board meeting. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, any other roundtable questions before we get into the Renewable Energy Ordinance Study Session? All right, with that, Melissa, um feel free to share your screen. And um we've got about about 25 minutes here until the um public hearing starts at 5:30. So go ahead. And as as the Commissioners um may or may not know, your public hearing agenda this evening, once it's closed, um includes an opportunity to go back into study session um in case we don't finish your renewable energy study, Renewable Energy Ordinance Study Session. Uh, we only have the one case this evening, so we can go back into study session following uh the public hearing and um and certainly get your comments and answer your questions on the Renewable Energy Ordinance and the process for for creating it. So go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you, and I was just having some technical issues with calling up the PowerPoint, so let me open that again.
Okay. Hey Marty, um I'm seeing that I don't, I don't believe we're recording yet or I didn't hear, or are we recording?
We are.
We are. Okay, thank you. Thank you much.
Okay, did that display? Can you see the PowerPoint now?
Yep, certainly seeing the PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, good evening. Um, we wanted to um spend a little more time tonight and get into some more of the details of the the drafting process and where the draft is as far as um working with the advisory group and to hopefully get your comments, your thoughts and your ideas. So um again, we're working on the utility scale renewable energy ordinance. And um please feel free to ask any questions or interject those of you that have been involved in the process as we go along because we really do want to get your feedback tonight and start thinking about how this will fit into the existing code. So with that, I thought we would also um just kind of think about, again, why we're doing this and where this directive comes from. And it comes right out of our comprehensive plan as we've we've talked about. There's a very specific implementation action item that uh directs staff to develop a utility scale energy ordinance to give developers more clear direction on appropriate setting of utility scale projects. And as you know, we focused on the renewables because of the number of applications we've seen and interest in doing this um in our county. The um the energy element and Appendix D of the Comprehensive Plan also specifically speak to developing um energy generation. Um, and then at the same time, asks that we avoid and minimize impacts to natural environment, wildlife, human health and community character. And this then is supported by a number of policies. And Policy 14, I won't read through all of these, but that does talk about protecting view sheds, considering potential for noise disturbances, considering conservation of species habitat, water resources, as well as preservation of prehistoric, historic and cultural sites as well as scenic corridors. Policy 15, out of the Comprehensive Plan, um directs the county to support development of utility scale projects on previously disturbed lands and areas close to existing transmission interconnections. Policy 16 speaks to looking for multiple use of the land that allows traditional continuation of traditional land uses such as ranching and hunting at the same time as permitting these renewable energy projects. Policy 17 um directs us to look at sites that conflict with critical wildlife habitat, habitats, sensitive species and movement corridors, et cetera. Um, and looking at ways to avoid development of those sites to prevent the need for extensive data collection and mitigation measures. So we'll talk a bit about how we are addressing these policies and the drafting of this ordinance. And then there's another policy, number 18, um that specifically encourages utility scale renewable energy projects that engage in innovative research and operational procedures that apply best practices and scientific knowledge. And it talks about specific technologies such as radar activated lighting, wildlife study designs that include um comparison sites, turbine curtailment during migratory periods and other practices. So these are some of the, this is some of the background that we are using to develop this um this draft. And as you know, we've talked about a large advisory group that's been helping us as staff draft this this ordinance. We've had representatives from the industry, from the public, from Planning and Zoning Commission, from developers as well as consultants help us with this. So we're working to ensure that the draft meets the intent of the Comprehensive Plan and also that reflects the community needs and industry best practices. Uh, so what we've we've been doing, um we've had an ongoing advisory group meetings. We've been meeting um since the summer, uh since August of uh 2020. The Board of Supervisors had a work session earlier this month on the sixth and got a very preliminary update as to what we're doing with this project. You may have seen there's an article in the Daily Sun. They picked up on the Board of Supervisors' Work Session and and wrote a front page article on this project. And then we've also been doing some outreach to our uh our tribal nation partners. And we've so far received three responses um in terms of um what we're doing with this project. So we've put that out there early con, early communication with the tribes. So I'll start getting into some of the details. So this is um a summary of the sections of the zoning ordinance that will be modified to bring this project um into the code. So we would be modifying Chapter Three, Special Uses and Conditions. And these would continue to be permitted as conditional use permits as uh utility facilities. Under a subset of that though called Utility Scale Renewable Energy Systems with definitions, new definitions that specifically describe solar, wind and biomass facilities. Chapter Five would also be amended, um in particular, the portion that allows the Planning and Zoning Commission to waive certain standards. And the standards that would be waiverable specific to these projects would be audible noise, underground placement of collection lines, shadow flicker, and then setbacks are already waiverable. But those are um also something that are important to these sites. And we'll talk more about what these terms mean. Um, and then there would be significant um new additions to Chapter Six, a definition including concepts such as participating and non-participating property owners, this idea of shadow flicker and visual resource. And again, we'll talk a little more specific about these new definitions in a bit. So um getting into further detail on Chapter Three, then the the draft is structured in a similar manner as the Wireless Telecommunication Facility Ordinance, which has preferred and disfavored location criteria. We've written into this draft what we're calling preliminary site evaluations. And those are us preliminary studies that um the applicants would bring in during pre-application uh phase with staff. And a lot of times we meet multiple times with these developers to understand where they're citing the large projects. And with that, then the idea is with these preliminary site evaluations, we can address many of those policy requirements that are in the Comprehensive Plan by looking at things like critical habitat, view sheds and other sensitive resources to understand initially where these are going to be cited and and make some adjustments based on that. Chapter Three also would include new performance standards specific to these facilities and then also some specific application requirements. And I'll just get into some more of the details then in terms of favored criteria for utility scale renewable energy projects. Uh, overall, favored criteria would be that they're not visible from a visual resource, that they would be near a substation or transmission line, existing substation or transmission line, that they would create minimal land disturbance or be on previously disturbed land, that they would allow um for multiple land uses as well as retaining traditional land uses, that they would apply water conservation methods when there's a project that would be applicable, that would be using water resources. And then specific for biomass sites, we had made some specific criteria that that would favor a reuse of an existing site, that they be located near a major highway or railroad transportation route and that they use local feedstock, which is basically the biomass materials. And we can talk more about that definition of feedstock. The disfavored criteria in a general sense would be sites that conflict with special status species and habitat. And you'll see special status species is capitalized. That would be also a new definition to Chapter Six. Sites that have impacts to archaeological, cultural or historic resources would be disfavored. Sites that require significant site disturbance. Uh, sites that impact military operations. And this is important, the Navy has been involved and in particular, uh representatives of the Observatory, the Naval Observatory. Military operations include their um their research at the observatories as well as other military operations. So they've requested.
Ms. Shaw, can I, I hate to interrupt you. Yes, I was going to ask Markens around a hole to please mute, which he did. And I would also, I'd like to ask Melinda Gantner. Thank you so much for muting. Um, I'm sorry about that, but we were getting some background noise there, Melissa or Ms. Shaw. So please continue.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I heard that too. So the um another disfavor criteria would be for wind turbines that are within a mile of existing non-participating residential properties. And again, we'll talk more about non-participating and what that actually means in terms of these projects. And then finally, um specific to biomass facilities, biomass facilities that are within seven miles of observatories, those sites would be disfavored mainly because the biomass um plants uh potentially would emit uh particulates, but also a heat uh signature that could um potentially interfere with observatory operations. So that was a request that we had from the observatories to add to the disfavor criteria. Are are there any comments or questions on those before I go ahead and move on? Okay. The the next addition or rather the the next um section in Chapter Three would be this requirement for preliminary site investigations. And these are intended to be what is called desktop surveys of available information. And again, These are intended to be what is called desktop surveys of available information and again, these would come in. During um, a pre-application stage. So that staff can work with the developers in citing the actual projects and looking at the site plant. And those would include information about existing habitat and wildlife evaluations. Uh, vegetation including noxious weeds. Archaeological, cultural and historic resources. Visual resource site identification, water resources, we would want to see a preliminary lighting plan. And then for biomass plants and preliminary emissions analysis. And we've had discussion with our advisory group on what this actually means and how much upfront work would it require? A developer to um, to conduct and. You know, there was, there was a lot of conversation about, well, are these actual finalized studies and we've. Um, come to the conclusion that no, they're, they're not finalized studies, but again, they're initial surveys. Of what e- existing available information. Um, is out there so that staff and developer both can get a sense for, is this in a critical. All wildlife habitat, is there, is there special, are there special uh, species of vegetation? Um, are there any kind of uh, historic or archaeological resources on the site that? That the um, developer as well as staff should be aware of right at the beginning and the idea is that we can work with them to appropriately cite. And come up with a mitigation plan if needed. And then in terms of actual performance standards for the facilities. The, the wind turbines um, seem to be the, the, have generated the most discussion among advisory group members. Um, because they are, they're um, clearly the largest and most visible and have the most visual impact of. These facilities, the solar sites will also have, have visual impact, they're not as tall, but. The um, and the biomass will have some impact, but definitely there's been a lot of focus on the, the wind turbine facilities. And so the performance standards uh, require a site plan that addresses how impacts would be mitigated, so. Um, you know, if there are cultural resources or are, is critical habitat. We would want a site plan that identifies where those are and shows how they're being avoided. We have specific performance standards uh, for vegetation weed and landscaping and I think it's important to note that. Um, the chapter four landscaping requirements would not apply to these large projects. However, we would want a vegetation and revegetation plan as well as weed management plans. To address impacts caused during construction. With the idea then that the areas that were disturbed during construction would be reseeded and the weed management would be maintained. Throughout the life of the project. But it um, in order to require um, plant units for landscaping does not make. Sense for these, these large scale projects. We are um, also asking for wildlife management plans. In the performance standards um, and as well as stormwater management and then fencing requirements. Address specifically um, how to, how to fence sites. Uh, for instance, for solar arrays. Uh, if it's possible that arrays can be fenced in groups rather than the entire site. That would uh, leave open the ability for wildlife corridors and wildlife movement to continue. Through the arrays instead of blocking off the entire acreage around the sites. And uh, also that the fencing would be wildlife friendly as much as possible while also maintaining security of the facilities. Additional performance standards that have been uh, written into the draft, uh, address audible noise limits and this is some learned experience. From other projects such as campgrounds that you are just looking. At um, some of the existing uh, turbine projects where there was a, a decibel limit set for um, impacts to adjacent properties. And then there are performance standards for setbacks. For height and then standards between zones and we'll talk more specific about what some of those, how those have. Um, turned out in this draft. We are um, have written in standards to address visual impact and that includes lighting plans. For the exterior lighting. There are performance standards for signs which are basically expected to be very minimal and warning signs and operation signs only. And then for access roads and the standard for access roads would be just to keep those at a minimum. And at the end of the life of the project to restore roads that would not then be used by these property owners. There are some specific performance standards for wind projects for the large wind turbines and. Uh, one of those would be is that the turbines would be designed to limit perching by birds on the turbines. Uh, the guy wires are required to have bird diverters, these are pretty standard conditions that you all are familiar with by the other. Uh, conditional use uh, projects that you have permitted at the, uh, these types of projects. Um, above ground power lines are required to comply with avian power line standards, there's more to that term than this. But there were some um, known standards that we wrote into the ordinance. Uh, to refer people to. And then there are performance standards for safety and shadow flicker nuisance. And that has to do with how high off the ground the blade sweep needs to be at a minimum and then also. How much of the shadow flicker can be impacting neighboring properties per year. Um, and then there are for biomass plants, some air quality impacts and basically we made a note in there that they would. Be required to um, obtain an ADEQ permit. So I am looking at the clock and it's almost five twenty-five and I. Chair Ontiveros, I didn't know if you wanted to take a break here before your, uh, your hearing starts.
Um, you know, generally we have been doing that. Um, and we do want to start promptly at five thirty, do you feel that you are at a good breaking point right now?
We could, um, it's about, we're about halfway through this. This presentation and then we can stop and, and uh, ask, go for your questions.
Okay, um, you know, we've got a couple of minutes, um. I wanted to ask you on the performance stand, on the, the screen, the slide that we're looking at right now, the one, two, three, the fourth bullet point down. Where it talks about safety and shadow flicker nuisance. Um, no more than thirty hours per year, I will tell you that I am not familiar, this is new to me, okay? And I'm not familiar with this, but thirty hours a year, that's only six hours more than one twenty-four hour day.
Right.
So I, there must be something, there must be more of a, more, more that I don't know obviously, because that doesn't seem like very much.
It's, it's not very much and that's an interesting question, we had initially written in that there would be no shadow flicker. Per year, um, there is actually a um, a definition for what shadow flicker is. And it's simple, it's the motion of shadows created by the movement of a rotating wind turbine blade. Between the sun and a receptor. And just some of the literature that we've looked at, you know, some people are, are affected. Uh, by that flicker, it's only during certain periods, um. Certain times of day and um, but it can act like a strobe light and affect certain people, so the industry. Actually helped us to write this so that they can manage this to no more than thirty hours per year, it does seem very minimal. But they helped us um, understand that there is some research. That has shown that they can manage it to be thirty hours per year and that's still a minimal impact on people. On that stroke light effect, but yeah, that's a, that is something that our, our developer. Advisors have helped us to understand as well.
Okay, in- interesting, um, I, I, I'm sure I have more questions, but I'm just gonna leave it there for now. Um, you're about halfway done, as you know, we are gonna pick it up after the one item agenda on tonight's. Um, public hearing, so we will. Stay close, stay close Ms. Shaw, we will be getting, yeah, we'll, we'll be touching base again. So why don't we, um, staff and commissioners, why don't we take a five minute break and I do see. That Commissioner Clifford has joined us, so Mr. McNeely, if I'm correct, we've got a quorum.
So Madam Chair, it's Jess McNeely from staff again, yes, it would appear that we do have a quorum.
Okay.
Have six of, uh, six commissioners.
Okay, all right, well, you know what, let's take about a four minute break. And uh, we'll, we'll resume the meeting, the public hearing at five thirty sharp. All right, Mr. McNeely, let's go ahead and start, my clock shows five thirty.
Okay, thank you, Chair Ontiveros, so uh, Chair Ontiveros, commissioners, welcome. To your April twenty-eighth public hearing. Um, and Chair Ontiveros, uh, go ahead, let us know if there's anything we can help you with.
Okay, all right, welcome to the April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, meeting of the Coquenino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information. Please feel free to keep your comments brief, any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address, we ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case, please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners, no additional public comments may be made unless requested by a commissioner. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval. Are referred to the board of supervisors. As a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the board of supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have fifteen days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers um, and turn off your camera. And thank you all for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county plan. The first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance, Mr. McNeely, if you would lead us in that, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, and apologize, we don't have graphics as much this evening. Um, for a flag, um, but um. Anyone can point towards what direction they might have a flag in their home, uh, just FYI, limited uh, bandwidth, we've been having some computer problems, we're trying to minimize. Um, images on the screens when we don't need them, with that, uh, Chair Ontiveros, I'll, I'll lead the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you, Mr. McNeely, the second item on the agenda is the approval of the March twenty-first, um, excuse me, thirty-first. Twenty twenty-one minutes. So if uh, if no one has any corrections, I'll accept a motion for approval of those, please, please.
Okay, I'll uh, go ahead and make that motion, I'd like to.
I have a correction before you do that.
Oh, okay, go ahead, please.
We have Ray Meyer as a member present.
Yeah, and these be changed, okay?
I noticed that too, thank you for mentioning that, Jim, my. Error on that, thanks.
Nope, nope, not problem, just wanna make sure you got that in there.
Okay, um, I would like to make a motion for approval of minutes. Um, for March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one with the deletion of Ray Meyer. As a planning and zoning commission, commissioner, excuse me.
I'll second that.
Oh, um, okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Clifford. For approval of the March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one minutes, uh, with the deletion showing uh, that Ray Meyer was not present at that meeting. Uh, all in favor, please say aye, Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters? Commissioner Walters? Um, is any, I, Commissioner Walters, I'm not hearing you, Mr. McNeely, are you?
So Madam Chair, I am not hearing Commissioner Walters either, I'm scrolling through our attendees, I do see. Uh, Commissioner Don Walters on the meeting, I do show him as muted.
Okay, um, Commissioner Walters, can you try unmuting? Again, and because I saw that you unmuted, but we still can't hear you. Are you there? Okay, Mr. McNeely, we must be having some technical issue because Mr. Um, Walters is showing unmuted and I'm not hearing him.
Yeah, I concur, uh, Chair Ontiveros, I'm seeing him as unmuted as well, I'm not hearing him either. So I'll try contacting him through uh, through another means, through, through phone.
Okay, um, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Will, uh, we don't have Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
And Chair Ontiveros also vote aye, on. Mr. McNeely, I've got a question for you because we can't. We need his vote to pass this motion.
Correct, Madam Chair, I'm trying calling him right now.
I can text him as well.
Tell you what, you're, why don't you say that again real quick? Uh, Madam Chair, that was, that was Commissioner Walters saying aye.
Okay, do you, okay, I didn't hear it, but you did, and so it was most likely picked up by the recording. So we have had a motion and a second for approval of the March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one minutes, and the motion passes unanimously. The first item on the agenda for the public hearing is case number CUP twenty-one dash zero one zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, I can hear you. I'm hearing you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This case is the K and R Tours Campground CUP. In this case, the property owners and applicant are Rachel Frampton and K and R Retreats LLC of Las Vegas. The representative is Ian Braun of CDNE here in Flagstaff. The zoning is G general zone. The location of the parcel is approximately six miles north of Valley on State Route sixty-six. The size of the parcel is one hundred and twenty-five point one-three acres, and the request is a conditional use permit for a hundred and twenty-site campground. This is a vicinity map showing the subject site, the project site. It is, like I said, about six miles north of Valley at Woodland Ranches, just north of Woodland Ranch Road. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. There are basically two forty-ish acre lots on the north end, and then there are smaller lots down here. They run, I think, from ten to twelve acres, something like that, for a total of a hundred and twenty-five acres. You'll know, and I'll talk about this more later, that these three parcels on the lower southeast side, those are not currently projected for any development, but they are part of the development and they do serve as a buffer. So the proposed development includes twenty-one luxury campground sites, thirty-six other delineated tent sites, a ten wagons in a wagon circle, ten airstream trailer sites, four RV trailer sites, and that, the air streams are, of course, also counted as RVs, so a total of fourteen RV sites, and fifty, fifty-three group camping sites. And that wasn't, that was never mentioned really in the narrative. It did mention that the density was point nine-six sites per acre. So that's how I came up with that number. It is kind of a scattered camping area. I'll show you in a minute. So that's a total of a hundred, a hundred and twenty total camping and RV sites. There's also reception office. The applicant's proposing permanent restroom facilities and a wastewater system, and also compact aggregate driveways and parking, and the power would be from APS. This is a site plan showing that, that the subject site over on the, down this side to the left and to the west is Highway sixty-four. You can see the access coming out of Highway sixty-four. It goes by some ruins that are here, including some rock ruins, interesting rock ruins actually, that I, I'm pretty sure will be retained. And then you will hit the reception office right here. Down this area, you have four RV sites. Up on this side, you'll have the ten airstream sites, which, as I said, are also RVs. These are the sites that are for luxury camping. These are some additional tent sites that are proposed. And out here on the far end, you see some, you see some, this wagon circle right here. And as I said, the three parcels down on this side are not proposed for any development at all. And as you can, this is the nearest home to the site, so they do provide quite a bit of good buffering. And I'll show you another map in a minute that has more information about the people that live in the area. This is a photograph of the glamping tents that are being proposed. And this is a photograph of a typical airstream RV site, you know, with decking and things to go with it. They did not provide us with, with any kind of rendition or any kind of picture of the wagons that they're proposing. This is a picture of the site from Highway sixty-four. This is right off of Highway sixty-four, so you can see this existing development in here. I'm not sure what it was used by, you know, for before, maybe some type of ranching operation or something. And this is an existing water tank on the site. I believe there's some kind of existing well. The applicant may reuse this if it is viable. It's quite a large tank, so it would be a very good thing to be able to reuse. Over here, you can see this circular rock formation as you come into the site. And this is just another picture of the open side. This is actually looking north. And that is Red Butte, I believe, right up there. So in terms of landscaping and lighting, the applicant basically proposes to keep all of the existing native trees and plants on the site. There's, there's a lot of pinon and juniper on this side, I think mostly juniper probably. And that is primarily what they'll use for landscaping. They are proposing to have some supplemental landscape up, up near the office, but that's the only thing they'll, they'll plant, which is very appropriate because it's obviously native landscaping and low-water-use landscaping. For lighting, for outdoor lighting, they propose fully shielded dark sky compliant lighting that would be installed at the restrooms and on the signage. And I have written the condition of providing, actually, that the only lighting would be what they're proposing and anything that the building division would require, such as probably a light at the entrance to the office. For public safety, the applicant has provided a preliminary firewise plan. As I said earlier in the study session, it looks like the applicant called me today, and it looks like that High Country Fire and Rescue would, will not be willing to serve this property. So they are talking to Tucson Fire Department and will possibly get service from them. So those are two of the possible fire districts and fire departments that they would get services from. The onsite roads would, of course, be constructed to support of public safety vehicles. Onsite trap, I mean, excuse me, onsite staff would be trained in emergency procedures, and there would be at least one employee on the campground site at all times while it is in operation. This is from the neighborhood compatibility study. They have quiet hours from ten to seven. They will also request that campers limit noise, including music. In terms of screening, as I've, as I've shown you, this is a big site. A lot of the properties aren't, aren't going to be developed. So they're looking at existing trees as providing screening, and also they have the fifty-foot buffer that is required along adjacent property lines so that there can be no campsites inside that buffer. And as I said, three parcels would contain no development, and from my measurements, it would be several hundred feet from any proposed campsite to any adjacent residential development, any, any homes. And also, as you can see in this application, they have six parcels, but only three of them would actually contain developments. So staff is recommending that all of the parcels be combined into one large parcel. And what that would do is that would maintain that buffer that we have there now. And also, it would take away the need to build any screening fences, which, of course, are very expensive and difficult to maintain as well, and they really don't look that good. So that's a kind of a win-win. And I wanted to kind of show you the local neighborhood here, what we're seeing. So this is the subject property. In the camp, it's, it's hard to see without the site plan, but the campsites would come into this parcel and about halfway down into here and up into here. All of this area would, would remain undeveloped. So you can see how this, this is probably the closest home right here. So you have that nice buffer to it. You have a pretty good buffer from here to this home. And then there are a few scattered homes in this area as well. So this provides a nice buffer to those homes. And then over here, you can see that it's close to, this is an MHP zone. It's kind of out here all by itself, but this is a manufactured home park. It's been here for quite a while. It's off of Woodland Ranch Road. And it provides housing for park service employees and various people that work out here. In terms of traffic impacts, the applicant has provided a traffic impact report. Unfortunately, it only showed this, it only took into account the sixty-seven formal campsites that you can see on the site plan. When they, when the site plan also indicates that there are areas that would have informal group camping sites. And those are sites where people would just come in off of a tour bus and bring their own tent and just pitch a tent and stay in those group areas. So since it did not cover that, I have talked to the applicant about that, and they are working to revise that report because that would make a pretty big difference in terms of their traffic impacts. And of course, all improvements identified by the TIA must be completed by the applicant. That could be as much as a, as a turn lane or, you know, a right turn lane or a center turn lane or both off of Highway sixty-four. We really don't know that at this point. In terms of citizen participation, the applicant noticed owners within one-half mile of the neighbor, of the neighborhood meeting, invited them to a neighborhood meeting, which was held on February fourth at nine AM. It was a virtual meeting. Five property owners attended the meeting, and one owner also called or emailed in. The neighbors' concerns were fire safety, noise, the visibility of the site, traffic and the need for turn lanes, the need for separation fencing, and the concern that campers would leave the site. So the applicant's response was basically that native trees would help buffer it, fencing would help buffer it. They would have a fire safety plan, as we have discussed, and also a curfew and a traffic study that would, that would address any traffic issues. I did want to make a couple of changes to the conditions. The first one has to do with the fire service. It initially said that High Country Fire and Rescue would be the provider of fire service for this site. And since that is the case, I just rewrote this to make it a little bit more flexible so that, and I'll just read the first part, the applicant shall demonstrate that sufficient fire service is provided as approved by the Fire Chief, State Fire Marshal, or an appropriate expert in the field approved by the Community Development Director. So that makes it flexible that, you know, there are many ways that, that fire service provision could happen on this site besides just High Country, which does not appear that they would like to do that. And then I also wanted to revise Condition Six. I noticed that I referred to, and I'll just read this, I referred to tents but not the wagons. And this is carrying on a conversation we had in the study session. It says, "All tents and wagons used as lodging shall be constructed of canvas or other fabrics used for tents and shall remain on the site for no more than one hundred and eighty days per calendar year, after which the tents, wagon covers, and all contents shall be removed excluding any platform or deck on which the tent was erected. All platforms and decks shall require the approval of a building permit." And these are the findings of fact. I'm sorry, this says zone changes. This is actually a conditional use permit. That, those have been addressed in the staff report as always, and we can discuss any of those. And with that, if the commission can make the finding, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty-one zero one zero with the twenty-seven proposed conditions and revisions to Condition Six and also to Condition Three that I did later. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
I've got a couple. Commissioner Best here. The group camping area, I don't know if we've seen anything like that before. And if I understand it correctly, folks would be walking off a bus, handed their backpacks, and they'd wander off and go camping. We would need to make sure, number one, that they didn't violate the setback. So they would need direction on, on the general area where they could camp. And another issue is just the impact of having people camping repeatedly because, you know, if you go camping, you always kind of knock down the grass where you put your tent. You know, you don't want to sleep on rocks. Seems like over time, we would start losing vegetation. I wonder if you've talked to the applicant about that at all, or if you have any ideas.
Mr. Best, I apologize, I didn't, I meant to show those when I went to the site plan. So you can see those, they're called out here and down in this area and over in this area. They're also called out in, inside, inside these areas where people would have more informal camping. And according to the applicant, they would, it appeared there wouldn't be much change. I'm not sure what type of way that they would develop these because it seems, well, difficult in one sense, just to go and, and pitch your tent. So if you've been to a campsite, I'm guessing that this, these areas would get worn a little bit over time. But this is also well within the density that's allowed. In fact, it's half the density that would be allowed on this site. So, you know, you are going to get, obviously, impacts from people that are camping in tents. So the applicant, you know, they, they could, they might be able to answer that question a little bit better, but that was my understanding from their narrative is people would just be able to go out and pitch the tent and, you know, stay in that, in that particular kind of group camping area.
Okay, thank you. Maybe the applicant can enlighten us on that one. The other thing is that we were talking about storage before, and this is kind of, for me, something new. There's no storage on this now, and if there is to be storage, it ought to be on the map. So just, that's something that maybe the applicant can address. I think these tents would have to be stored during the winter, right?
Mr. Best, that's, that is correct, but, you know, there are, you know, many ways to store, store things. There, but, but that is a good point that you're, you're bringing up. And so we'll see if the applicant has some ideas at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Best.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Walters, I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Can you hear my voice?
We can. Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Bob, I'd like to know if you're looking at any kind of fireproofing on the wagons and the decks with the remote area here and the reluctance to get coverage from the fire departments. It might be prudent to put a fire retardant on the wood materials.
Commissioner Walters, yes, that is, it is something, and we kind of discussed that, or actually, Mr. McNeely brought up that earlier in our study session discussion that the building division does check the, the canvas fabrics or whatever kind of fabrics they're using for fire safety. I, I'm not really sure about the decks themselves, but, you know, obviously, fire safety is a very important thing out here. There's grass, there's lots of wind. And I understand, I mean, I did, I did explain that the High Country Fire and Rescue did not want to cover these areas. However, it does appear from my discussions with the applicant today. That uh, Tucson Fire Department would, might be willing to do that. And that's actually much closer. Than High Country and also it's a professional fire department. It's not a volunteer fire department. Uh, High Country is actually, it appears trying to create a fire district, which would. Uh, make it more of a professional, you know, fire department at that point. But Tucson is much closer to here. And that would be, you know, much more professional fire department at this point at least. So they, they would have a lot of input into the fire safety plan. Because that obviously is a very important thing here and if, you know, they are. Proposing fire pits, firings. So that would definitely be very important that that be controlled in terms of. This time of year when it's very windy, we definitely don't want to see any fire at all out there.
Hey, Bob, this is uh, and Sharon Taveras and Commissioner Walters, this is Jess McNeely. And I just wanted um, with Community Development Staff, I just wanted to clarify and help emphasize what, what Bob had hit on earlier. Um, and I cracked open my zoning ordinance here to, to help out some. The, we wrote into the zoning ordinance in the campground section, and I'll just quote it. Campgrounds shall maintain a valid service agreement with a recognized. Fire Safety and Emergency Services Organization. A firewise plan and emergency ser- emergency response plan to be approved by local fire. Uh, by a local fire, fire responder and/or the Community Development Director is required. Such plan may be required to address issues, including but not limited to forest health. Selective tree thinning, details of construction for any fire pits. Requirements for construction of additional facilities to aid the fire responder. In case of a fire event, defensible space between fuels and structures. Ingress and egress points and methods for maintaining them. And or information to be disseminated to the applicant's clientele or employees in regard to fire safety. Additional items to be addressed in the firewise plan and emergency response plan. May be required by the Community Development Director and/or emergency response. Uh, emergency response responder. So bottom line is, um, even if the applicant has not identified who their fire and emergency service. Uh, responder is, they, they cannot operate under the code. Um, you, uh, without, without it, period. So that's not even a condition that's required. In your conditional use permit approval, that is a base ordinance requirement. If at some point in time, their um. Their service contract um, uh, or whatever method they have of having fire and emergency services. Um, became invalid, they would have to close that immediately. Uh, so they cannot operate under our base code. Um, uh, regardless of conditional use permit conditions without a fire and emergency services. Um, uh, agreement and, and program. Does that make sense to, uh, to you, Commissioner Walters?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for that, Jess.
Thanks. Go ahead, Bob.
Any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Short, I'm not seeing any. So I'm going to go ahead and ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is present to address the commission this evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Ian Braun with CDNE. I am the applicant's representative. My address is six one eight East Route sixty six, Flagstaff, Arizona, eight six zero zero one. Um, I'm going to let Rachel, the applicant, um, kind of just give a. Overview of the project, but first I just wanted to reiterate that we, we are, uh, we have had a preliminary discussion, uh, discussion with. Uh, Greg Brash over at Tucson Fire, he's the Tucson Fire Chief. And uh, I'm sure whatever conditions, stipulations he comes up with, uh, we can abide by and hopefully work towards a um. Fire service agreement with Tucson Fire, which is actually much closer than High Country Fire. Um. So with that, I'll, I'll just let Rachel uh give you kind of a brief overview uh of, of her project here. So I think, I'm pretty sure Rachel's on the call here.
Hi, this is Rachel. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Rachel, this is Sharon Taveras. Would you please state your name and address for the record and then go ahead and proceed with your comments?
Yes, my name is Rachel Urban. My, my, my unmarried name is Frampton. I did actually get around to changing my, my name to my married name. So it is in fact Rachel Urban. In my address is uh forty nine fifty two South Rainbow Boulevard, uh Las Vegas, Nevada. And uh, myself and my husband are here on the call. My husband's name is Chris, Chris Urban. And we are small business owners in Las Vegas. Uh, over a decade ago, we started a small business. Uh, taking international and domestic travelers on small group. And private tours of the national parks. So we operate mainly in the Southwest because most of our tours uh begin and end in Las Vegas. Uh, but they do go a little further afield than that as well. Um, our mission is to educate and protect the parks and spaces in which we operate. And we are subject to a commercial use permits in all of the national parks and areas that we operate in. So we are certainly subject to leave no trace and environmental conditions in order to have those permits. Um. We are members, proud members of the Tourism Cares uh organization, which is a nonprofit organization. Aimed at motivating businesses to have a positive social and environmental impact through travel. Um, so they do a number of projects a year, um, cleaning up areas and investing. Uh, into certain areas that might need help and educating businesses in how to. Uh, protect the environment in which we operate. Our plans are to open a campground and ramping location near the Grand Canyon. Um, for small groups and individuals to utilize when visiting the national park. Um, we're experienced campers ourselves, and we use campgrounds all over the Southwest. Um, the location would be fully staffed. And all of our guides and staff are trained, fully trained in all aspects of campground safety. So that not only covers fire safety, but it covers a multitude of other. Um, safety things that may come up whilst camping. But either way, our guides also camp alongside the guests. So our, our actual staff uh bring people to the area, they're staff on location. And then the, the dedicated guides also camp alongside the guests, so they're not unattended at any point in time. Um. There'll be no unattended fires. I know that's a big deal and, and I can fully appreciate that. We are well trained and well versed. Um, in fire safety. Um, and no unattended fires will be permitted at all. They'll all be in supervised fire pits. And I know that we're working in very close accordance with local and state regulations. And I think Ian has expanded on that uh a little bit, but um, nothing will be unattended. And fires and quiet times will, will occur from ten PM. So it, you know, there'll be regular patrols at the campground. We'll make sure that no fires are left unattended. And we'll make sure that uh fires are correctly extinguished before, uh, before quiet time, which will be at ten PM. Um, our goal is to provide a safe, sustainable and family-friendly environment. For visitors to enjoy uh the peace and quiet of the outdoors. A lot of our, a lot of our camps are first time campers, a lot of families. Um, and they just want a little peace and quiet and then, and enjoy nature. Um, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Urban. And is the spelling of your last name U R B A N? Am I getting that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And let me just ask you a question. Uh, Mr. Braun, this also would be for you since you are the representative. Have you guys read, uh, received and read the staff report? And are you in agreement with the terms and also the modifications that Mr. Short set forth in this evening's presentation?
Ian, can I defer to you?
Yes, you can, Rachel. Yes, um, I, I spoke with Bob earlier today about the condition we needed changed regarding um fire service. And since it looks like that has happened, uh, we're, we're in agreement with all the conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Braun. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative?
This is Commissioner Best. Uh, Ms. Urban, uh, thanks for your presentation. I, I don't think that you were here earlier, but I'm not sure. We talked about the requirement to. Remove and store tent and possibly wagon materials during the winter.
Yeah.
And. I just want to make sure that um you have a plan to either store that offsite. Or if you do want to store it onsite, that we put that on the map. And, and the consideration is simply that. Some ugly storage buildings not pop up, uh, that could possibly be seen by the highway. It, it just takes some planning and working with the. With the staff to.
Understand.
Figure that, figure out a plan. Um.
Yeah, I completely understand. Yes, and I, and I was here earlier and I did have a note to, to respond to that if I was asked. So, you know, these, these. These tents go away every night. You know, then the, 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 the group camping is not a permanent thing at all. It, it, they just, there won't be anything there at all in the day. But for ramping tents, they're, they're also small tents. They would remain up as would the wagons. For the hundred and eighty days that we have the, uh, the permit. And then in the winter, they just roll up, you know, all the, all the canvas, which I know um was another point that I noted, is fire retardant. We purchased them from um. Uh, companies that attest to, you know, they are fire retardant canvas, but they simply roll up. So they don't take up very much space. And we could do one of two things. Uh, we have a location here in Las Vegas where we store everything over the winter because none of our camping tours operate in the winter. Um, for obvious reasons, we could either bring things back here. Or uh, what we might think about doing, and I'd, and I'd have to defer to Ian, is just having a small um container. On property somewhere over the winter that, that wouldn't be seen by the highway or, or any neighbors or, or anyone else. Um, where we just roll everything up and, and pack it away. So we've, I guess we've got two options.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, I, I think that um possibly we could just put in a condition. And say uh. Any storage units would be approved by staff, something like that. And, and.
Sure.
That makes perfect sense to me. There would be a security issue, of course, if, if they were out of sight from the highway.
Yeah.
Now we've got a security issue, but that, that's, I'm not trying to design this for you. I just don't want to drive by and. And see anything ugly that we haven't thought about. So, thank you very much.
Yeah. You, you wouldn't see it, but security is a, a concern because obviously those are valuable canvases. So we would have to decide whether it was worth transporting them back to, to base. I guess over the winter or, or having them well locked up outside onsite.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative by the commissioners? Okay, I am not seeing any, so I am going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening on this case? Okay, I see a Mark and Zerona Holt. You have your hand raised. If you would like to go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record. And your, um, three minutes will go ahead and begin.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Uh-huh.
Thank you. Um. My name is Mark Holt. I live at five seven six nine North Woodland View uh, road. Which is just uh. Right at the corner northeast of the campground. And uh, one of my concerns is the fencing, that we don't get people uh. Hiking all around. Obviously our house and our, our shops and, and our, you know, our neighbors. Uh, and this second big thing is. Uh, the Tucson Fire Department is not in our district. Uh. They're over twenty miles away. And like I, the last time I spoke, uh, I knew that Mr. Trotter said that he wasn't covering anything out there at all. And we do have a lot of hype went and there's a lot of uh. Major fuel, be it uh. Wood or dry grass. There, uh, we had a major fire that's cost us all, that was caused, human caused. And um, it's cost us all, our insurance has gone up. Even though they're going after, supposedly going after the guy. Um. But that is a big concern of ours. Um. You know, we have a, it's a big two-story house. Um, you can see it. Uh, like I said, just north. Uh, and I think it's east. Side of the road there. Uh, we have twenty acres and um. Anyway, we, you know. Having it where people can't uh just hike anywhere. Would be uh. You know, we didn't buy the house. It. For that, have a campground in front of it. As long as, you know, it's, things are out of sight and they do things the way they say they're going to do. I, I, if you pay for your property, it's like. You know, you use it, do whatever you can do. Or want to do with it, but uh, we do have to have respect. For a lot of us that live around there. And um. The same way, we want to give the same respect to the property owners, uh, they're there now. So the fire thing is a big, uh, Tucson is out of our district. They did come out on the last big fire we had, which was the Indian Metals Fire. Um. And stuff was gone. If I went and had a fire break cut a week and a half before, we lost our house and everything. Uh. As it is, we lost almost two hundred trees and, and uh, that has nothing to do with these folks. But it is a big concern of ours. Uh, for how fast and the winds that we have, that those fires uh. Progress and, and uh. You know, with the fire department twenty miles away. Uh, that's if they're not taking care of anything in their district. So that's just a concern of ours. Uh, and the uh, you know, uh. The safety issue, not having people coming around or, or hiking around our properties. Uh, that. I hope this property will be fenced. And uh.
Mr., Mr. Holt, this is Sharon Taveras. I'm going to have to interrupt because your three minutes have expired. Um, but I did just want to let you know that when a conditional use permit is issued. There are conditions that go with it. And one of the conditions um that will most likely be imposed. Is, it says, and I quote, "The property shall be fenced with wildlife-friendly fencing. Or solid fencing as appropriate and signed to prevent trespass onto state or private land." So I just wanted to read that to you to let your, to let you know. That your concern has already been addressed. And I believe that you were present when Mr. McNeely from Community Development read in the zoning ordinance. If the applicant does not have on. Uh, is not subscribed to some kind of a fire service. The use ceases to exist. It's not optional. So I just wanted to point those out to hopefully let you know that your concerns have already been addressed. And that should help, help alleviate some, some of that for you.
Okay.
You're, you're very welcome. Mm-hmm. The next hand I see raised is an individual by the name of Sam. Sam, if you can hear me, go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes.
Hello, uh, can you all hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record and then you have three minutes.
Okay, uh, my name is Sam and uh, my address is five one three, Subline Drive, Williams, Arizona. Um, I'm one of the owners of the Save Valley Mobile Home Park. And uh, I was here. Uh, I have a question about the, the use of uh, the Woodland Ranch Road. And the Woodland View Road. So my question to the applicant was, uh. Are they going to be using the Woodland Ranch Road for accessing their property?
Um, you know, let me go ahead and to keep. Um, you know, let me go ahead and to keep things in order here. I'm gonna go, this is Chair Antiveris. On Mr. McNeely, this, as, as you know, we did receive an email with this concern. Would you please address the access to this property, which is off of Highway sixty-four?
Sure.
If you can sound on that, please.
Sure, Madam Chair, this is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff. And Bob, if you could, if you could put the image to their site plan showing their circulation plan and their road plan on their site. The applicant has done their traffic impact analysis based off of direct access from Highway sixty-four. So that will require an A dot encroachment permit and whatever improvements A dot requires along with that encroachment permit. But their road network does not show connection to any other road other than Highway sixty-four. So to answer Sam's or this, this neighboring property owner's concern, no, the applicant indicates from their site plan and their submittals that they will not be using Woodland Ranch Road or any other roads in the area, only direct access to Highway sixty-four.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, Mr. McNeely. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to address the commission this evening? Um, let's see, Mr. McNeely, I am not seeing anyone. Are you? I just don't want to miss anyone.
So Madam Chair, I'm looking, I believe Mark and Zoron, hand is still up, but I believe they spoke before.
Right.
And I am not seeing any other hands up. We do have one person who has joined us from a phone number. They may not have the ability to raise their hand. So there's a let's see, an eight oh eight area code phone that is, has joined us. So maybe if that caller from the phone, if you'd like to speak, if you could unmute, unmute yourself and let us know who you are, if you would like to address the chair in the public comment portion.
I, I think that was applicant Ms. Urban.
Okay.
That's correct. My first, the eight oh eight number, that is correct.
Okay, okay, thank you, Ms. Urban. Um, okay, other than that, I think that we have gotten everyone's comments in. So with that, Ms. Urban, go ahead and mute again. And I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it up at Commission Discussion. Commissioner Best, would you please start the discussion this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think, I think that we are progressing in our familiarity and our ability to to craft good conditions for these campgrounds. I think what we've got before us is a pretty complete set of conditions. We've learned a lot in the last few months. I would propose a condition number twenty-eight. Storage facilities on the property shall be approved by staff. Since we've come up with that concept on this case. A minor change, condition number twenty, the applicant shall provide all visitors with leave no trace materials, period. Parentheses, see the Center for Outdoor Ethics. The Center for Outdoor Ethics is a great source for leave no trace materials. But there may be other sources and I would hate for us to dictate to an applicant which private source they use. I have a feeling everybody will use that nonprofit Center for Outdoor Ethics, but I don't think we should require it as long as they come up with the material. Other than that, and we have two small changes from from staff adding wagons and one other. Other than that, I think it's a good proposal and I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Burton.
That looks like a pretty good proposal. I totally understand all the concerns from the neighboring properties, but I do believe all those have been addressed and I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burton. Commissioner Walters.
It, it looks like a good project to me. I, I'm a little concerned about the response time for the fire. And I again reiterate to the applicant that they may look into fireproofing the wood structures onsite to help reduce that. But other than that, I can find the, I can make the findings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, I have to state my concurrence with both Bob Short's revised conditions and the condition that Commissioner Best has proposed. I think it's a pretty good proposal overall relative to fire district response. I think we got a situation where if High Country could provide service or was willing to, it would be a six of one, half a dozen of the other. So as a go forward, if they can meet the conditions as stated, then I think we've got a pretty good project here. I've been out and I've visited that property some, several years ago for a temporary use permit. And it's, yeah, it's got a lot of juniper, but a lot of grass also as, as was stated. So I think if they have concurrence on fire protection, then I think it's a pretty good one. But concerns have been addressed. I'm in favor of it. I can make the findings for this or CUP.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Clifford.
I can make the findings to approve. It's, we've gone through it before and it's a good project.
Okay, thank you. This is Chair Antiveris and really I've got nothing to add beyond the other, my, my fellow commissioners' comments this evening. It looks like an excellent, well-thought-out project and I think it's got great potential. So with that, I will accept a motion for approval with the, we're gonna need to modify three, six, twenty, and then add that additional one that Commissioner Best spoke about.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve CUP twenty-one zero one zero. With adding number twenty-eight. And has that, has that been written in yet?
No, why don't you go ahead and state that again, Commissioner Best?
Madam Chair, can you see, can you see the screen? Because I think I did write that in.
You've got that in there. Storage facilities on, on the site shall be approved by staff.
Yes.
Number twenty, let's scroll to that one.
I just added, or another relevant organization.
Okay. That's fine. And then number six, I think it was, that was yours. You, you had two, right? Three and number six was adding wagons. Did we get that?
Yes, I underlined what's added here on number six.
And then number three. What, what was the addition there?
So I, I'm showing the strikeouts and the additions.
Yeah.
Three.
Yeah, and so there's one more idea I have just sitting here, and that would be a requirement to have a sign that gave fire danger consistent with the fire danger status of, I guess, Kaibab National Forest to alert campers to the level of fire danger. Is there any enthusiasm among commissioners for that condition?
Well.
This is Chair Antiveris and I am not adverse to that on condition at all because I think I, I know, I believe I can speak for all of us, we are all very, very well aware of the, really, you know, the fire conditions in northern Arizona. And I think the more that we can highlight that to visitors, I think the better. So I'm not adverse to adding that, Commissioner Best. That's, that's my, my input.
And I, I'm with Chair Antiveros on that one. A hundred percent because if we have people from out of state, they may really not be aware of just how much of a danger it is during a great deal of the year here.
Okay, well.
Sure, Walters here, I agree as well.
Okay, let's try condition number twenty-nine, signage shall, signage shall be installed to alert campground residents to the fire conditions on the Kaibab National Forest.
Okay, we're watching Bob type, type that in. Let's review it. Yeah.
So close.
Okay, I got it, Mr. Short. I believe that's
Fire danger to level. Or is there a better word?
No, I think level's good.
Okay. All right, I'm happy with that and guess we're ready for a second.
Also, you got one second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Best and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of CUP twenty-one dash zero one zero with modifications to conditions number three, six, twenty, and adding conditions number twenty-eight and twenty-nine as stated. All of those in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveris. I also vote aye. And so the motion passes unanimously and CUP twenty-one zero one zero is approved. Thank you guys very much. The next item on the agenda is call to public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, the next item on the agenda is continuation of the study session. So Ms. Shaw, if you would like to pick up where you left off on the renewable energy ordinance, please.
Thank you, Chair Antiveros. I'll go back to the presentation. We left off on this slide. We were discussing the draft performance standards for wind. And I did want to mention that yesterday I did email a draft of the ordinance to all of you. So if you did not get it and would like to see it, please let me know and I will, I will resend that. But I'll just go back to the beginning of this slide and and note that the draft contains requirements that turbines, wind turbines, be designed to limit bird purchase, to require the bird diverters on the guy wires, that above ground power lines comply with avian power line standards. And then we talked about the safety and shadow flicker nuisance created by the spin of the turbines. And that the blade sweep be no lower than thirty feet to the ground and that the shadow flicker be limited to no more than thirty hours per year based on understanding from the industry representatives as to what the standard seems to be across the country. And then not just for wind, but we do have a note in there that the biomass facilities would need to receive a permit from ADEQ to address air quality impacts. I did want to go back to slides above and just talk real briefly about what the performance standards for vegetation weeds and landscaping, what that actually means. And the draft currently requires that the plant, the project will be planned and developed in a way that maintains the local ecosystem by minimizing grading and site disturbance so that native vegetation and soil are retained to the greatest extent practical. And then it does go on to require that areas cleared during construction not needed for site operations or revegetated with native vegetative cover and that we have a a plan to control noxious weeds and that's required for the duration of the permit. That is for the vegetation weed and landscaping requirements. And then in terms of wildlife management, we had written specific to this draft that Arizona Game and Fish Department's guideline for reducing impacts to wildlife from Wind Energy Development Arizona, and there are some other guidelines that those be followed. So instead of citing particular performance standards for wildlife management, we refer to those technical documents. And that an applicant would need to design and, and, and make their project compliant with those professional guidelines that are published by other agencies. So I just did want to clarify those standards in particular. I wanted to talk briefly about the application requirements and in addition to the regular application requirements that are particular for conditional use permits, we did specify some additional narrative that would need to be submitted to explain how the, the project actually complies with the preferred or the disfavored criteria, how it provides economic and environmental benefits to the county. You know, how the design applies current best practices and technologies and also preliminary results of the site, preliminary site evaluations that we talked about previously. So in other words, to have detailed results of the archaeological, cultural, historic preliminary site evaluation and to understand in addition to that, how Native American tribes were contacted and the results of the contact. We, we also would want in the narrative, any additional information that had been requested at the pre-application. The there are, are going to be some architectural drawings because we do anticipate a lot of these facilities will be constructing substations. So those will be smaller buildings in the turbines. But then in addition, we would see the, the elevations of the turbines and/or the solar panels or the biomass plant. Pretty standard with a, with a conditional use permit, a traffic impact study or analysis would be required. Usually minimal impact from those facilities after construction. We would want to see a cultural resources management plan to deal with any kind of cultural resources that have been identified. And then also required with the application would be public safety, fire protection, any emergency management. One of the recent comments that has come out of the advisory group discussion was in regard to battery storage. And so we'll be looking into that in a little bit more detail to see if there are any specific fire protection or emergency management planning criteria that would need to be applied for some of the battery storage facilities that we're seeing come in with these projects. To continue with some of the application requirements, again, we would want to see erosion and noxious weed control plans. Some of the compliance details and participating property owner confirmation is something that would need to come in with the application. And the participating property owner is particularly important because that's a concept where a, an adjacent property owner may not have any actual facility on their property, but they have reached an agreement with the developer to receive some sort of benefit from the project. And so that's considered to be a participating property owner. And we would need to see with the application who is participating, who has signed on to that agreement and who has, who is not, because that will then matter in terms of the setbacks from wind turbines in particular. Compliance information has to do with lease agreements and permitting from other agencies, just Compliance information has to do with lease agreements and permitting from other agencies just to so that the county understands that the applicant has gone through the particular um decision procedures or is working through decision uh, procedures with other major agencies that would need to permit these as well. The um, another important aspect of the application is that we have a decommissioning plan and security so that when the project um, at the end of the project, after the facility becomes obsolete, there is a way and a means for removing the the equipment and restoring the site. We have written into the application um, and administrative portion of the draft that if the um if the county uh, community development department needs assistance reviewing the project, that a third party review would be possible. Um, the that is one of the questions that has come up with the advisory group in terms of if there is a um, a maximum cap on the cost of that, because the cost of a third party review would be borne by the developer. So we are looking into if there is a a way to put a limit on that, or if it's just a reasonable uh, cost recovery in terms of having some uh, additional expert review, help staff evaluate a project. And then finally, um, as with Perrin Wind Farm and and the other and Chevalon Butte, the other projects that have been approved, uh, we would want to see compliance mon- monitoring and offsite mitigation if needed for habitat. So the compliance and monit- monitoring plans would be something that would be particularly um, reviewed during permitting. And the idea of offsite mitigation for habitat was a particular item that came up during some discussions where if habitat was um was unavoidably impacted, then there would be the option if another agency requested some assistance with creating some offsite mitigation for that. So that was written into the draft as well. I just wanted to highlight some of the uh, current topics of discussion that the advisory group has been has been talking about. And there there's been some ongoing discussion about the preferred and the disfavored criteria. The the um, items that were listed that I showed you previously are the current uh, criteria that the advisory group has agreed to thus far. So that probably though will be um, continually to be um slightly modified. I don't foresee any major changes to the preferred or disfavored criteria that you just saw. The um, there has been a fair amount of discussion about audible noise compliance testing. And um, it was originally written into the draft that um, audible noise be tested um, annually, but it was brought up that probably post-construction compliance testing could be done either just once or at a um, an interval determined by a monitoring plan. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. There there's been a lot of discussion about visual resources, what those are, uh, what the studies need to do in order to identify a visual resource and how to define that. So I'm I have got some more slides here to talk about that in particular. Um, there's also been uh, a lot of discussion about the wind turbine setbacks and what distance should be written into the code in terms of a minimum setback. And then, as I mentioned just earlier, if there is a way to quantify the cost of a third party review, so um, that's something that we'll um, as staff will be coming back with a recommendation. So I did want to talk um, come specifically a bit about the concept of audible noise, and I think you all are familiar with that um, from permitting other conditional use projects like campgrounds and and um RVs as a permanent residence where the use of a generator has been requested. And so we've tracked along with along with the previous approvals where operational noise impacts should not ex- shall not exceed and that word either should not be there, but that shall not exceed fifty DBA measured at the property line. There was an earlier draft that gave an option uh, to measure audible noise based on ex- existing background noise plus five DBA that has since been modified to be more consistent with some of the the existing permits. And so the current draft reads that the operational noise, meaning after the projects are constructed, um, those will be measured at the property line and they would not exceed fifty DBA. And it's interesting to note that the um, measurement of op- um, operational noise and the audible noise impacts um are actually, it's a fairly technical process where they set out equipment and but they need to set out equipment and um, make sure it's measured at days where the wind is high enough to turn the turbines, but low enough on the ground that it doesn't distort the noise at ground level. So there's some interesting technical nuances to measuring noise. And that would be demonstrated by a noise analysis prepared by a qualified expert. And we've we had an opportunity to speak with an expert uh, who does prepare these types of noise forecasts as well as the noise studies and and learned a bit about that from from that person. So um, that's what we were able fortunate to be able to um, base that information and and base our draft on that on that contact. Um, so the the draft again does um ask for noise forecast. So in other words, when an application comes in, it would be, there would be an idea of the noise limits at the property lines from the different turbine locations. And then again, the compliance testing, the post-construction testing of of that would be, the current draft has written in that the schedule would be based on the monitoring plan. I believe the industry has um, suggested that once per uh, ra- rather, once post-construction would be sufficient. Um, obviously, if there is a complaint by a neighbor, then that would be a compliance issue that would be um where we would request additional testing be be uh, applied there. Um, audible noise is one of those standards, though, that the commission would have the ability to waive if the findings could be made for a waiver. And that was something that gave the industry some comfort to um um, to know that if there is a um, situation where the, for some reason, the noise could not be um could not be addressed sufficiently to meet the standard, that that could potentially be waived. We don't really see that that need would arise very often because the noise would be greatly uh, mitigated by the setbacks. So that's just something to keep in mind. The idea of visual resource impact studies um, has been um, pretty hot topic of discussion. And I think you all are familiar with uh, the most recent wind project approval at Chevalon Butte and and the visual simulations that were supplied in order to understand the the visual impacts from that project. So we've we've learned a lot from that and we've been fortunate to to have uh, the consultants who worked on those projects a- as part of our advisory group, as part of our advisors to help us draft this ordinance. So we've landed on this concept that with the the preliminary site investigations, that there would be a a preliminary vi- visual resource site identification for anything within ten miles of the project area. So in other words, um, around the entire project area, boundary of ten miles out, if there's anything that is a visual resource, then that would need to be, a simulation would need to be prepared from um, from that visual resource to the turbine site to see the impacts that would be created. And the reason why ten miles was chosen is because we did look at the different simulations and it seems like ten miles is the maximum distance that the human eye can really see an impact from. The code is written to be flexible enough where if the community development director saw a need, for instance, if there was a a rise like Red Butte that was twenty miles or so um, from a a proposed project, then there would be flexibility to require a simulation from that additional visual resource. But the ten miles seem to be a um, a distance that would be a known distance for a developer to start preparing those simulations. So the visual impact analysis, then the actual simulations would be required to come in with the application. And again, those sites would be identified during the pre-application phase of the project. So the applicant would work with staff to make sure that those visual resources were identified and simulations prepared. Um, there are some performance standards written in to help address visual impacts such as undergrounding and collection lines, um, as much as practical. Undergrounding collection lines is another one of those standards, though, that the commission would have the ability to waive, understanding that in all cases, it may not simply be possible to to underground the collection lines if there's a substantial amount of rock or a long distance that they simply cannot dig through. So that would be something that would be shown to the commission project by project. And if there is not the ability to underground those, and if the findings could be met, then the commission would be able to waive that standard on a project by project basis. Um, there's also uh, some sighting and design standards um, as well as screening. So if there's existing vegetation, for instance, then that could be used to help mitigate visual impacts. Um, design standards would also, we, the county does not have a lot of leeway in um, what kind of colors we can require turbines to be painted because that is dictated primarily by the Federal Aviation Administration and um, other agencies uh, because of the um, the aircraft um, safety needs. But um, we did write into the code that they would be um, I believe it's written in there. So it'd be at least a light tan color or as much as possible to blend with the natural environment. So we don't have a lot of leeway, though, to require dark green color, for instance, on those wind turbines. So in order to get an understanding of a visual resource, um, this um, has been, has come up a lot and the developers ideally would like to see a map where the county has actually mapped visual resources. And um, so we were trying to get at least partway there by writing a definition. And this is a current draft of a definition for a visual resource. The the words that are highlighted and bold are actual terms that our comprehensive plan has defined. So we are working with our mapping um, department to see if we can actually uh, show those those um, scenic byways, scenic corridors, scenic roads, et cetera, on a map to start to create this idea of a visual resource map. Um, it might be something that is a project that we look at with the next comprehensive plan update to go beyond that and actually look at other types of view sheds, scenic vistas, natural features or such that are in the landscape that are considered visual resources, but for which we have not done a study and have not conducted an actual visual um, analysis of. So um, this is something that I'm sure will get a lot of discussion, but we we are at least proposing a, this definition go into the zoning ordinance to give some guidance as to what is a visual resource. Another um, interesting topic of discussion, as I mentioned, is the wind turbine setbacks. And um, currently, the draft pr- provides um, some disfavored criteria. So disfavored sighting criteria for a wind project would be anything located within a one mile of non-participating residential properties. And um, in addition, then there are setbacks um that are required in a performance standard number seven, and that standard act number maybe actually have changed at this point. Setbacks, as you know, are waiverable. Um, that's a sta- that's already um, a standard that the commission has the ability to waive. And one of the things, though, that we do, because we are requiring the visual impact analysis, what we are anticipating that that will help provide is an understanding of the visual impacts to residential properties that are um in particular, adjacent to these projects. So um, I wanted to show you um, some specifics how the current draft is written. So the draft is currently written that wind turbines need to be set back from adjacent non-participating properties by the greater of the tower height times three or at least a half a mile from the property line of any residential or open space zone. And so that's important to understand because the tower height, as you, as we know, can vary. I believe the towers at Perrin Wind Farm were four hundred feet. Um, and Chevalon Butte are higher. I believe they're six hundred feet. We've heard of other projects coming in um, at eight hundred feet or potentially even higher. So that's where uh, we determine that it would be at least a half a mile or the greater or the tower height times three, uh, whichever is greater to account for these larger turbines that we haven't seen yet, but we've heard are starting to be designed with these projects. And the additional setback then would be a quarter mile from other zones or state lands and from public land that is not zoned. So this this idea of setback, though, has gone around and there were some alternatives proposed by by some members of the advisory group. And one of the concepts that got a lot of discussion was that, and that's shown as alternative A on this slide, is that um, the idea of a view angle. And the view angle um, essentially boiled down, and I do have a slide if you're interested in this um, to show what that means. But it actually boiled down to essentially at a view angle of about six degrees for a six hundred foot tower is about a mile setback from any residential zone or open space zoning district. And so there was a lot of discussion on whether or not the view angle or a minimum of a mile would be appropriate versus the three times the tower height or half a mile from the property line. And we do have representatives from State Land Department on our um, advisory group, um, as well as like I said, the industry representatives and and understanding that's that the um the sections um, out in the checkerboard area are one mile by one mile. You know, we started to understand that if there was a one mile setback requirement from property lines, that could potentially eliminate sections of land. And the next slide here kind of shows that a bit, um, where you can see um, and these hatch lines are approximate locations. It's not the exact site plan for some of these projects because we pick up the parcel numbers and it shows the entire parcel numbers. But you can see the the squares here, the checkerboards are actually one mile by one mile. So with that one mile setback, then the ta- for the tower height could potentially not be allowed to be sighted, for instance, on this on this piece. So the last discussion we had was, which was just the other week, the advisory group um thought about that. And the current draft is proposing the um, the greater of the uh, turbine height times three or the half mile distance, knowing that the possible visual impacts then could be adjusted um, on a project by project and specifically um, residential impacts could be adjusted by the commission um, on a project by project basis as the visual resource impact analysis should show. And so with that, that was the end of what I um, I had in terms of presenting some of the details and most of the uh, currently discussed details of the of the draft. The next slide I have just shows the the schedule that we we hope to be working within. And um, so we're we're starting to prevent, present study sessions and work sessions with with you and then with the Board of Supervisors. Um, we are still working with the advisory group. So we anticipate that those meetings with the advisory group would go at least through May of this year. We do want to reach out. Again, we have met specifically with the ranching community. We did a number of site visits. Um, and the reason why that's important is because most of these projects will end up sighting primarily on those properties. And so we're we're reaching out specifically to that community to get their input. And um, so we we do need to schedule those additional meetings, hopefully beginning next month as well. And after the Board of Supervisors and the Commission, after we have uh, work sessions and study sessions with you, then we will have public open houses. And um, anticipating that that may start in September of this fall. And then after that, we could start scheduling public hearings. And so with that, that's where we're open now for your questions, your thoughts, um, any kind of feedback you might have on the draft and where we might need to go with this in the future.
Okay, Ms. Shaw, I'm going to go ahead and start tonight. For whatever reason, the draft that you sent went into my trash file. And I didn't, yeah, go figure. Didn't even notice it until I was going through, emptying the trash file and saw this email from you with this draft. And so because of that, I'm, oh, my cat, I think is going to join us. Hold on just a minute. Oh, the fun of Zoom meetings, huh? Anyway, I have not had a chance. I am on, I am reading it very thoroughly. And I am on page three. I believe it was a 13-page document, which means that I have 10 more pages to go. And so what I'm going to do, what I would like to do for me personally is thoroughly continue to read that draft and then reach out to you, you know, personally and directly with any questions or comments that I have because I feel like I need to read that before I really engage, you know, in any further conversation because I fully understand everything you set out tonight. One question I do have, you said that you guys are going to be reaching out to the ranching communities. Have you reached out to them? And if so, what are you getting like as initial feedback from that community?
Thank you, Chair Antiveros, that question. We did have an initial meeting with them last fall, in the fall of 2020. And then as a result of that, we actually were able to visit three of the ranches. So staff went out and visited Perrin Wind Farm and then the Bar T Bar and Flying M Ranches. So we were able to see their operations and their, and their sites firsthand. We have two of the ranchers on our advisory committee or our advisory group and have been getting good feedback from them. Nothing in particular at this time, but they are aware of what we're proposing. So we are going to, we have made contact with them and we will be zooming with them again in the near future to make sure that this draft is in their hands and that we get their responses, their comments.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's really it for my comments. But again, I am going to read that draft thoroughly. I've got 10 more pages and then I'll reach out directly to you if I've got any questions, concerns, or comments. So with that, that finishes my comments. So I'm going to let the other commissioners have a take of this.
Melissa, I did not receive it. If you could send it to my Gmail address. This is Don Walters.
Okay, thank you. I'll resend it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I would, I would have a couple of comments to make. First, first of all, as you have listened to this tonight, and we kind of realized this at the last meeting, I'm in the committee, everything we've done so far almost is about wind. And that's just one of the three elements, solar being the other obvious one, and then biomass. Just to put it in scale, I did a little snooping around on the internet. The Chevalon Canyon Wind Project, which had towers which approved for almost 800 feet, I think it was about 60 square miles and certainly the visual impact would have been about 100 square miles. That was 500 megawatts and a similar output solar plant in California that I found was covered about nine square miles, but covered it completely. So there's an interesting discussion to be had here. Do we prefer one over the other? Which one, which type of renewable energy is coming our way? So far, it's been wind. But we do have the Navajos announcing, I think, two projects that we wouldn't have anything to do with, but that speaks to the viability of solar. I think the Hoppies have got one in the hopper that nobody knows much about. And part of the Babbitt Ranch project is solar. And obviously, solar doesn't have the view shed issues if, if, if it's cited reasonably, doesn't have the view shed issues that, that wind towers have. Interestingly, when, when the first draft came through, and I assume this came from other jurisdictions documents, there was a talk of pollinators in the solar installations. And I was just scratching my head, pollinators being, you know, bees and butterflies. So we're going to have wildflowers poking up through the solar panels. And so that kind of piqued my interest. Is it possible to go into the landscape and not scrape it, cover it with gravel and spray it with weed killer forever? But go out into the landscape, more or less leave the land form alone, poke some holes for posts, put up the solar panels and have little wildflowers poking up through there and little baby coyotes playing underneath and, you know, have it be part of the landscape in some sense, part of the natural landscape. And we haven't really had that conversation. So hopefully in our next meeting, we're going to focus a little more on solar. To me, and, and there's actually somebody, Bill Aubrey on the, on the committee, is wise in the world of renewables. He kind of feels like solar is really the future. That makes sense to me. And it gets us out of the difficult situation of, of threatening the view sheds that bring 5 million people a year here and which we all treasure. It would be nice to have our cake and eat it too. So I look forward to that next meeting, hearing about the butterflies and the other pollinators. So other than that, I think it's been a really, it's been a great process and well managed.
Thanks, Commissioner Best. And we will, that is one of the particular topics that we'll be following up on with the advisory group. And just FYI, there, there are standards written into the draft that do encourage that the solar developments be, be built that way. There, there's obviously going to be some site disturbance, but we would like to make, make it clear that these standards should not be to just gravel and spray the site, but it has to do with fencing to allow movement for wildlife as well as to allow native vegetation to grow up to provide that habitat for pollinators and other small animals, like you said, that could then benefit. So it's mutually beneficial. But thank you.
Also, another thing we discuss, and mostly you may have discussed this just now and I missed it. But the Native American communities will have some input on what they would consider the view sheds that they consider important, sacred, beautiful, whatever. And so the whole, the whole issue of the visible resource is really tricky and hard to define and obviously extremely important for applicants because they don't want to come in, put a lot of energy into, a lot of energy into a facility design and then have somebody pop up and say, well, that's not acceptable to me. And, you know, fill up our chambers with people saying that the, the visible impact is intolerable. So that, that is probably the trickiest thing with the wind.
That, that's right. And that's why we are writing in there that early communication with the Native American tribes about these projects is something that needs to occur right from early on from the pre-application phase of it. And I will just mention that we, we received a letter from the National Audubon Society supporting the project. They are, we've got some additional advisory group joinees now, if you will. So we've got some additional people joining from that organization, but they are generally supportive of our efforts. Thank you.
You know, Ms. Shaw, this is Chair Antiveros again. I did have a thought when you were talking about the visual component and this perhaps being something that would come up at the next comprehensive plan update. But I know that during the time that I have been on the commission, it would be very nice to have some kind of a visual inventory. It was actually Commissioner Best comments right now of things popping up, that if there was actually some kind of an inventory, because it seems to be one of those, those, those topics, if you will, that there, it's just not clearly delineated what, what is, what's not, where it's at. And I don't even know if that's something that's possible, but I, I'm just, while we're at this, this discussion level, I'm just throwing that out there, that that would be really helpful if it's, if it is something that is even possible to do. And I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Chair Antiveros. And visual resource inventories are, are possible. They've been done in other places around the country. It is quite an effort and undertaking. And you know, it's, Jess may want to speak a little bit more to this. We have thought about the timing of that and, and recognizing the usefulness of having that type of inventory for the county, not just for these projects, but for other projects, as you just mentioned, would be quite useful. I guess we need to balance that with what it might take to spin off of this, conduct that now where if we conclude this project and then put that visual inventory on our to-do list, that might be something, a way to actually get that inventory created and then that could then benefit other projects as well. So it's just one strategy we've come up with.
Yeah. And, and I agree. I'm not, I'm not necessarily suggesting that it needs to be done now, but just while we're talking and as I, and you know what I mean, is we're having an exchange of ideas, well, you know, kind of in a fairly informal setting. I just thought that it might be, it might be something worth noting because I know that we've had discussions on, on gateway, you know, community gateway corridors. And that seems to be something elusive. You know, and, and that's why I'm just saying it, it might be something, but you're right. It may be for another day to put on the to-do list. So again, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, thank you. That might be something worthwhile, looking for grants to help us undertake. It's a, yeah, that, thank you. That's a good spark to look into something like that to actually help support that kind of project.
Oh, absolutely. And if we, if there is any kind of a grant or other resources on that, you know, that might come across your desk or somebody else's desk, that would be a really good thing to maybe take note of and yeah, latch on to.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So does anyone else, do any of the other commissioners have, oh, Commissioner Ruggles, I see you unmuted. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm one of the other commissioners on the committee for this as well as Sot. And the comments that I've heard this evening are duly noted. So in addition to the thorn in the side that I've been to Melissa and dealing with some of the engineering related standards and requirements, I think this certainly deserves further discussion. And Sot Best has really brought up some good points this evening on this. So I, I expect to, we're here from Commissioner Best in our next committee meeting on this and talk about it some.
Okay. All right. On do any, I'm not seeing anybody else raising a hand or unmuting. So I'm kind of doing a going once, going twice, and I think we're almost sold for, okay, Mr. McBealy, I see you unmuted because I almost sold for an adjournment.
That's what I was anticipating. No, I just wanted to thank Melissa for a great presentation and, and certainly both Sot and John and their involvement. But this has been a great process. Certainly acknowledge the discussion and appreciate your, your contribution there, Chair Antiveros, about the visual resource inventory. That's certainly something we've kicked around and we all see, would, would see the value of such a map, not only for these projects. And obviously, the visual impact of a, of a wind turbine is, is much more significant than most of the other development we deal with. But we would like to see that kind of resource available for all development in the county. So we, we acknowledge that balance of we would like to get this done and, and have it effective. And we can't create a, a requirement for an overstretched GIS department that's within, or division rather, within a different department. They fall within the IT department and, and they have their, you know, their demands, you know, from all across the county for many other things. So probably that balance in there of, hey, what, what, what is possible? Appreciate the discussion of, of finding grant funding possibly. That, that would be great if we could, if we could find something to help us. But really appreciate the discussion. And when the advisory group and staff kind of land on a, on a draft, then we'll, we'll want to probably wrap up. What do you think, Melissa and Chair Antiveros, in, in minimum one more study session with the, with the planning and zoning commission to get their comments? And certainly after, they've had plenty of time to review whatever becomes the final draft.
I, I agree with that. I think that we need another, you know what I mean, another bite at this. So like I said, I'm going to read that draft thoroughly and reach out to Melissa. And I would encourage the other commissioners to do the same. And when we've, when we have a really good understanding of that, that's going to lead to, you know, more, more conversation, more discussion at the next meeting. And then of course, whatever comes out of, on the next study sessions that this committee is having. So I think we need at least one more, at least one more. That's my thought.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah, that's, so Chair Antiveros, that's, that was all I wanted to add. But thank you, Melissa. And thank you, Chair Antiveros.
Yeah. And yes, and thank all of you. So with that, no, Commissioner Best, you unmuted.
I'd just like Jess to hang around after the party so we could have a chat if he wouldn't mind.
I, I can do that, Sot.
Okay. All right. Well, if there is nothing else, my clock shows 7:14 PM and the meeting is adjourned. So good night, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.